Good evening and welcome to the School Board Meeting of the Fairmont Area Schools. For roll call, all members are present. We also have one of our student board members here, Elena Heifner, and Grace Simpson is not here this evening. Please join me for Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
You have the minutes of the previous meeting before you. I'd entertain a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Motion by Mike, second by Mari. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We have an agenda before you. Any changes? Or, I'm sorry, I'd entertain a motion to approve first.
I'll make a-
I'll second Mari's motion.
Thank you, Mari. And Mike. Any discussion or changes? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We have our celebrations and community reports. Superintendent Treino.
Yeah, thanks Nicole. One change that the Minnesota School Board Association did this year is they moved Minnesota School Board Recognition Month from the month of February to the month of September as the school year gets kicked off and things get started. Traditionally, our local teachers' union has been the meeting in which this month is recognized to provide acknowledgement to the work and support that is there on their behalf for you or their appreciation for you as board members. So, they do still this year because we received this email in the district office in the month of August that this was being changed. They will still be in attendance at our February 11th board meeting as they typically have in other years, but nonetheless, we are going to recognize the month in alignment with the Minnesota School Board Association's proclamation here. Whereas Fairmont Area Schools recognizes the importance of public education in our community, and whereas Fairmont Area Schools appreciates the vital role played by those individuals who, as local school board members, establish policies to ensure an efficient, effective school system, and whereas school board members serve as a voice that enables our community to preserve local management and control of our public schools, and whereas school board members are charged with representing our local education interests to state and federal governments and ensuring compliance with state and federal laws, and whereas school board members selflessly devote their knowledge, time, and talents as advocates for our schoolchildren. Whereas local school board members are strong advocates for public education and responsible for communicating the needs of the school district to the public and the public's expectations to the district. Now therefore, be it resolved that Fairmont Area Schools recognizes and salutes the members of the Fairmont Area School Board by proclaiming September 2024 a School Board Recognition Month. Thank you to the six of you and Elena and Grace for your service. And while Stephanie is coming to the podium here, I will hand out your certificates acknowledging that note of appreciation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Up next, we have our CER summer update.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Thank you. Good evening. I appreciate you allowing me to come and give you a brief update on our summer. We had a great summer. We had a variety of youth and adult programs. This summer, we offered 11 adult programs, which had around 200 participants, and 35 youth programs. That's 1,212 participants. Our sports numbers, or our sports programs, excuse me, continue to see good numbers. Those are kind of our tried and trues. Our T-ball, youth tennis, archery, boys and girls basketball, just to name a few. We also saw some great participation numbers from our enrichment offerings. We had some summer art classes this year, laser tag, and had record numbers for our child babysitting, safety, and home alone classes. And part of that record number was due to, we had an anonymous donation that provided that class fee at a discount. So, we had a community member step up and just felt like those home alone and child safety and babysitting classes were important for the community and provided a donation across the board to decrease those fees, which was much appreciated. We continue to explore partnerships and opportunities, including the Fairmont Police Department. They offered a series of Partnering a Teenager courses, Precision Driving Center of Minnesota, which provided our 55 Defensive Driver Discount Program, and the Minnesota Twins, which provided a youth baseball clinic that drew over 80 kiddos from the area. Our facilities were very busy this summer. Scheduled facility usage for June 1 through August 31 was 11,509 hours, which consisted of 183 permits. As we look to start the school year here, our Cardinal Prime is in its second year. We currently have 31 kiddos registered for the after-school enrichment program that serves grades K through 6. Registration is done on a monthly basis for those families. There is still room to register for our October course with that registration deadline coming up September 24th.
What are the hours that parents can look at? You know, because sometimes for, you know, it's the after-school, I realize, but how late they can have the students.
Yeah, yep. So, currently, our prime program ends at 5:30. Yep. So, after school until 5:30. And parents or families can do multiple options in terms of registration. We have a couple of families that have registered for the whole year, which in some cases, that doesn't align with family budgets. So, we do offer a monthly registration piece, and we plan to send out reminder emails. There will be a tablet at pickup also as parents are picking up that reminder that we don't see your kiddo on the list quite yet, just a reminder that you have until the 24th of the previous month to register. Great question. Any other questions as it relates to summer programming or recap?
You mentioned prime has 31 students. Is that about capacity or is there room for more?
We do have room for more. Yep. Last year, with the fee structure being a non-fee based, we were able to service around 60 kiddos. So, based on some staffing and ratio numbers, we have room. We have room to add kiddos for sure. Yeah.
So, if somebody doesn't know they need it until the 7th of October, are they out of luck for October, or could we make accommodations for that?
I would say currently, we could probably look at some situations as we potentially increase in numbers with ratio and that, looking at, you know, staffing purposes and it might be trickier, but at this point, you know, we have some room. We do, I mean, we're seeing families that obviously are utilizing this for an after-school spot for kiddos. We also see, in fact, we just had a couple of families that registered, I think, for March or April. There was some communication from current, maybe in-home daycare providers that are looking at maternity leave or some closures or things like that. So, this is a great option for those families that have then that backup and can then transition back to an in-home daycare if needed. So, yeah, great questions.
I encourage us to never say no to anybody if we can. If that's an issue, let Andy do it. He'll talk to us, but-
Well, I don't think it's cost. It's probably just individuals to supervise and to provide care for the students.
Right. But like, we need to not say no to families. If we're in a pickle, then we just got to help them figure it out because a lot of these folks are going to rely on that. And we want to, well, it's supposed to be a helpful thing, not a stressful thing.
Right, absolutely.
But, you know, organization and budget's important too, but it sounds like it's off to a good start. I was just there today picking up my kid, and it looks like they were all having fun. So, that's, I'm glad that we have this finally, after many years of not having it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions, further questions for Stephanie?
Thank you. We appreciate you coming this evening.
We have our student superintendent's report and calendar. Superintendent Treino.
Yeah. As I usually report on enrollment, I know the last couple of meetings, I've said we're going to wait till the October draw where the Minnesota Department of Education pulls our student enrollment numbers. I can report that similarly to last year, our numbers at this point reflected a higher enrollment. We are trending almost identical to where we were last year, which is good. That our enrollment is consistent. We have some increases in areas that were pleasant surprises in terms of enrollment and other areas that have remained consistent. So, we're trending similarly to where we were a year ago, which is a great place to be in to have that consistent enrollment. Just one note on the Buildings and Grounds updates. We've talked a lot about our gymnasium project that is now complete. We have new conference banners. The recognition banners were hung up. We're going to add one for speech and robotics. We're adding a banner that has not been in existence in past years. We definitely have the space to do it, and those are both State High School League activities. So, it's only right that we have those recognitions up there with the rest of the activities in our gymnasium. So, that will be added as well. Our new conference banners are great. One of the school's logos that is resembled by a letter, the company unfortunately sewed the letter on upside down. So, that has been sent back for replacement, and we'll get that taken care of. But it looks great. Our FIAD classes are in there. Our activities are practicing in there again. So, just a great job of our Buildings and Grounds crew, holding the vendors accountable, keeping them on schedule, and a great job by our vendors to stay on schedule, which oftentimes doesn't happen to get those things done. One thing I don't have specifically noted on the report as well, but our replacement of our PAC lights, that replacement project is complete. Training things need to be done on how to use that system, but otherwise, that is another exciting piece that has been updated as well. The facilities assessment update, the note that I have here, we just heard yesterday from our representatives from ICS that are doing our comprehensive needs assessment. They have all the information from interviews and surveys. They're going to take the next two to three weeks to analyze those inputs. Then they'll work to summarize and categorize the needs identified in those surveys before moving on to the next steps in that process. One to highlight, too, one thing that we do as a district is annual school health and safety training. For the past few years, we've required all of our staff members to complete training in all of these areas that include bloodborne pathogen awareness, students experiencing homelessness, health emergencies, specifically with seizures, child abuse and mandatory reporting, as well as anti-bullying and harassment. Some of these are required for specific staff members. We just made the decision internally to require all of our staff members to complete those trainings. They're done in an asynchronous format, which means our staff members can choose when to complete them on their own within a certain timeframe. There's quizzes at the end to verify a baseline of knowledge that you have to pass at, I believe, an 80% or higher percentage. So, those are things that we often take for granted that are routine, but wanted to highlight that that happens on an annual basis as well. Region financial services, we're currently working with a representative from our region Financial Support Services that hosts our smart finance system. Our current focal points in working with them are tying up our annual audit, reviewing upcoming information for the certification of our levy, with our truth and taxation hearing coming up in three or four months here, and also assuring compliance with all of our regularly scheduled bills and transactions. Last thing I want to highlight, our Agriculture Advisory Committee resumed their meetings last evening, and the topics of focus there were making sure we have curricular pieces aligned with the upcoming harvest, signage at the school's hunt farm, donation of upcoming harvested resources that often come to the school, fundraising for our FFA program, and then planning for the National Convention for FFA that happens in Kentucky every year. Our next board meeting is September 24th. One additional thing, tonight, we have our newest appointed board member, Elena Heifner, as a student school board rep. So, welcome Elena. You might recognize her from her time here sharing, I think most recently, you were here sharing on the successes of the speech program. So, I'm going to let Elena, I did briefly prep her for this this afternoon. I'm going to let her share a little bit about some of the things she's involved in at school and the community, and her counterpart, Grace Simpson, has some activities that prohibited her from being here tonight, but she will resume attendance as soon as she's able. So, welcome Elena. Let you share a little bit about yourself and then-
Hi, I'm Elena. I'm a senior at Fairmont High School this year. I'm involved in speech, student council, Unified Cardinals, and National Honor Society. I do a lot of community service projects through student council and National Honor Society, helping with like the blood draw, junior high dances, stuff like that. And then outside of school, I have two jobs. I'm a dental assistant, and I work at Jake's Pizza.
Thank you, and welcome to the board.
Thank you.
Thank you for adding this to your already full schedule. We appreciate your input.
All right. Thank you Superintendent Treino. Any questions or comments about his report? We'll move on to financial business with donations and grants in Appendix A.
We have a resolution to accept a donation in Appendix A as provided for in Minnesota statutes. Be it resolved by the Fairmont Area Schools Board of Education. We accept the following donation from Community Charities of Minnesota. Bullmore Lanes of Fairmont has donated $1,000 for the Student Activity Fund. So, with a huge thank you to the family there at Bullmore, I move that we accept that donation.
I'll second it.
Thank you. We have a donation, we have a motion and a second for the donation. Any discussion? We'll take a roll call vote. Jen?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Mike?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Mari?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. And thank you to Bullmore. We have financial reports and bills. Jessica's not with us this evening, but I believe Julie is going to-
Yep.
-report on that.
I've got it. We've got single checks. There's only one for the city of Fairmont for the homecoming parade permit. So, that'll be coming on sooner than we know. Also, you have listed on your payroll your transfers and wires as well, and then also with the detailed checks. I'll just bring up, we don't have to do this, but I'll just bring a couple things. FLR Sanders Incorporated, $63,392.41. This is to refinish the high school gym floor. We've talked about that with our building and grounds. There's also Harbo Mechanical Contractors LLC, $45,287.42 repairs for drain lines, sump pump, elevator, and plumbing of holding tanks, things that were found this spring with the increase of the rain. And then Minnesota Motor Bus, just the monthly bills. We usually pay in the fall a little bit extra and then pay through the year as well, but that's $119,050.30. So, I think that's about it. So, okay. I will then make a motion to approve the wire transfers for August 22, 2024 to September 4, 2024, the August 19, 2024 single check, and the September 10, 2024 bills.
I'll second it.
Thank you. We have a motion by Julie, second by Mari. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We have no old business. We'll move on to our personnel. Resignation.
We've got a couple resignations. Lori Putney, elementary special ed paraprofessional, submitted her resignation effective 8/30/24. She's been employed since May 13, 2024. And then Tori Nava, high school special ed paraprofessional, submitted her resignation effective 9/5/24. Tori was employed since November 27, 2023. I'll make a motion to approve those resignations.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Jen, second by Dan. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Employment. Mari?
Yep. Principal Rosen recommends that Alicia Ramos be hired as an elementary special ed paraprofessional for the 24, 25 school year. And with that, I will make a motion that we improve the employment of Alicia Ramos as special ed paraprofessional effective September 3, 2024.
Thank you, Mari. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Julie. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Contract settlements. We have the paraprofessional contract in front of you in Appendix B, and with that, it's for the 2024, 25, and 2025, 26 school year. I will make a motion to approve the contract as presented in Appendix B.
Second.
We have a motion by myself, second by Mike. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We have Operations Committee report. Mike?
Yeah, we hit a number of topics. Like, if you see the minutes, there's nine of them. Talked about Jessica and kind of coverage for her while she's gone for a little bit. Talked about the update levy Andy mentioned earlier, truth of taxation's coming up in three months in December. Renewed, talked about renewing our agreement with MCSAP, which I can't, Martin County Substance Abuse Prevention Coalition. We had a couple of comments for maybe changing and tweaking just a little bit on that. We also went through the memorandum of understanding regarding the REED Act between the school and the union for some changes there. Talked again about that insurance leg issue that we talked about, I think, at the last two meetings, when that issue being fixed going forward. Being proactive, we started looking at the gymnastics facility lease agreement. Currently, we're on a five-year contract to use Litfit in cooperation with Martin County West.
It's a five-year contract, but it's expiring here.
Expires next year.
Thank you.
So, trying to be ahead of the game on that. Martin County West is the whole school on that, so they're a running point, but we're trying to, it's not the type of thing we'd want to just have it expire without a plan. Tyler Garrison was at our meeting, gave us, you know, his usual updates, talked about the tennis court situation, different options that are there. He was going back to the engineers to get some more information, possibly including pickleball, lines or space within the tennis courts and what that would look like. And then we had Steph, which is gone now, but she presented at the Operations Committee as well about some different programming, things that they were doing, and, you know, what direction she was looking for from the board. So, it was a pretty good meeting, pretty full. Some of these items, you'll probably see on an agenda in the near future for approval.
So, the pickleball, just a question, does that- So the pickleball, just a question, does that have the same height of a net as tennis?
No.
So there would be a difference then for that? Okay, thank you.
And we're, we're exploring that option at this point to potentially, to see if it's-
Feasible or-
If spatially, or spatially, we can do it. But financially, we need to make sure it's feasible within the scope of the project to, to add that on. Because it'd be a great asset for our community, for, for our FIAD classes as well as that sport grows in popularity and, and application as well. I do know the city has looked at those lines when they update the, the Veterans Park courts as well. So-
Is that currently, there is no pickleball courts within Fairmont, correct, at this time? Or is there?
There are at Veterans Park. There are.
There are some right now at Veterans Park? Okay.
And we have people come in that have periodically used our facilities with the lines that are, that are on our gym floors currently.
Sure.
Like taped lines.
Yeah, correct.
Okay.
Great. Any other questions or discussion?
I make a motion to close the board meeting pursuant to Minnesota statute 13D.03 for purposes of the superintendent's annual performance review.
Second.
We have a motion by Mike, second by Julie. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. Following the appraisal, we'll come back here and we'll reopen the board meeting and then adjourn it. But it'll be just very quick. No, no other business will take place. So, thank you.